I have the call to order invocation by Councilmember Jeff Darby, the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Jeffrey. Holy Father, thank you for this time that we come to this place to meet and to provide services to those that we have been elected to serve. We thank you, Father God, for this season. We thank you for Christ, who is the reason for this season. We thank you, Lord God, that he not only came as a child, but Lord God, you place your son on the cross. And, Lord, we celebrate his birth, his death, and his resurrection. We thank you, Father, for all that you have done, all that you want to do. We pray for those who are in our midst. We pray for their family, their loved ones, near and distant. We pray, Lord God, for peace that passes all understanding, in the name of Christ I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your call, please.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hammond?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Maggio?
Here.
All present, council, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings laws and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the city council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly, and if there is a need for audience members to hold a conversation or take a phone call, you are asked to please step out of the meeting. City council appointed sergeant-at-arms have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting in order to maintain orderly conduct of the meeting.
Counsel, the chair will entertain a motion to approve minutes of December 6, 2022, regular council meeting. Ms. Smith with the reading.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Any comments? Anyone would like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Today we had Ms. Brown, but she's not going to be here, right?
No, sir.
Okay. Any other?
Need to approve the agenda.
Okay.
Are there any changes?
Entertain a motion to approve.
Is there any changes you want to make?
Oh, I think we have one. Forgot about that. Counsel, I would like to continue item number two and number three under new business. I think because we received some inquiries from the BAC, it would be beneficial for the administration to look at those things that they asked in their email, their letter. And so they'll give you time. I think we can continue till the 24th meeting in January of '23.
I'll second that, Coach.
Any comments? Anyone would like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote, counsel. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
That motion carried, by the way.
Motion carried. Any comments? Please cast your vote, counsel.
Mr. Montgomery? Motion carries. Ms. Brown is not present today. She said she'll reschedule when she looks at her schedule. Public hearings, actions on unfinished business, adopt an ordinance allocating $65,000 for construction of a new sanitary sewer force main along Viva Drive and Shed Road to provide sewer service to customers within this area using the Sewer Capital Contingency Fund to cover all project costs. Final reading.
So moved.
Second. Motion. Mr. Smith in the second. Mr. Hammond, debate or discussion? The floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached revised 2022 Cooperative Endeavor Agreement between the City of Bossier City and the Louisiana Department of Veterans Affairs. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Williams, seconded by Mr. Maggio?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any debate, discussion on this item? Floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance authorizing and approving the engagement of Herd McElroy Investral LLC to provide professional services to audit the financial statements of the City of Bossier City and the Brookshire Grocery Arena Fund. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion, Mr. Free, seconded. Was it Mr. Hammond?
Mr. Montgomery.
Montgomery. Can barely hear you down on that end. And any discussion? And the floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance appropriating the sum of $50,000 from the Hotel Motel Taxes Fund for the purpose of repairing street lighting along Interstate 20. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Maggio. Discussion, counsel?
Yeah, I do, Mr. President. Mr. Patrick, did we, from our last meeting, did we get anywhere with DOTD on?
As far as their agreement and?
Yeah, their agreement.
Not in the two weeks, no, sir.
Okay. Maybe after the first of the year, we can?
We have reached out. I do know they've met with Baton Rouge, but we have not heard what the results of that meeting down in Baton Rouge were.
Okay. Thank you for checking that.
The floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to approve change order number one for the Bossier Arts Council Brick Cladding Project with an increase of $117,109.95 for a total contract price of $601,109.95. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Williams. Discussion? Anyone would like to comment on this item? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to appropriate $1,500,000 from the 2018 LCDA Bond Fund towards additional modified hydro clay courts at the North Bossier Tennis Center. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Montgomery, seconded by Mr. Free. The chair is going to assume that most of you are here on this item, and for your consideration, we will have four in favor to speak on this item and four against. You have to come to the mic to give your comments germane to this item only, and we will hope to have a good discussion on this item, positive discussion. Counsel, any comments?
Ms. Kay. How you doing, Ms. Kay?
I'm doing well, Mr. Maggio. How are you?
Let me get you, give your full name and address.
I'm Todd Killen. I live at 8310 New Sensation Court, Shreveport, Louisiana.
You know, I've been in your facility three times. Love what you do out there. I support you. But at this time, it's the wrong timing. We've got other issues coming and all that, you know. And I love what you do, but right now is just bad timing for me, you know, to support this issue right here. You know, we've got other, the overpass ain't finished, and, you know, different budgets coming in. But later on down the line, I wouldn't mind bringing it back up. But I love what you do down there. No, thank you.
Counsel, any comments, discussion on this item before we open the floor? Okay. Ms. Killen, do you have someone you want to speak on behalf of the?
Yes, sir, I do.
So if we would respectfully not interrupt, as the speaker is speaking, and you have three minutes, ma'am, give us your name and your address.
Sure. My name's Angela Fanner. My address is 2490 Churchill Drive in Bossier. And just a few comments, really just to follow up from the workshop that we were at last week. For those of you that don't know, a little bit of background on Katie Build, so clearly we have a tournament that we have or is held at Bossier Tennis Center. That's the fundraising arm of the Katie Build project. Well, Katie Build began in 2011 as a partnership with the Fuller Center, Northwest Louisiana Fuller Center for Housing. And it's a legacy build in honor in memory of three girls, Katie Watkins, Molly Reed, and Emily Perdue, girls that were, who lost their lives in a car accident in 2006. And so Katie Build was, came together through this, the legacy builds and the partnerships with Fuller Center, and has since included partnerships with First Bossier, Simple Church, Asbury Methodist, all the churches the girls were connected to or a part of, and then the City of Bossier. So Bossier has generously donated lots for us to build the homes on. Also, Mr. Maggio has been a part of our build and donating lots as well for the Molly Reed House and our partnership with Simple Church. So the fundraising piece at the tennis center is just a portion of what Katie Build is as far as the overall view of what's happening in Bossier City with the legacy build and our partnerships. So to speak to the potential of the courts and what that means to us and the potential addition of the courts for our Katie Build tournament is clearly huge in the sense that six more lots would provide more opportunity for fundraising for us. We're already, and it's a great problem, because we have gone, since we started the tournament, we went from 72 players and $9,800 to 370 players and in excess of $65,000 in fundraising this year. And so the additional six courts would mean a lot to us locally and obviously here in the city as well in helping us to provide additional housing. We have five more lots that have been donated to us, again, with our partnership. And so this is just something that helps us continue to be able to provide the homes for, most of them are veterans here in Bossier, and the houses are over here on Jean Street, so just not far from where we're at. And the additional lots are over there as well. So I guess I'm just here to share a little bit about what this means to Katie Build and to our project, and hopefully this will be something that'll be considered and taken in consideration as you vote for this today. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, everyone. My name's Jeffrey Goodman. I live at 3810 Wingdell Drive in Shreveport, 71106. And I'm here to briefly talk about the city tennis tournament that the Bossier Tennis Center has hosted since 2018. It's a tournament that started in 1923 at Princess Park in Shreveport, and it was the most important community tennis gathering of the year until 2010, when, for a number of different reasons, it fell apart and went away. That is until 2018, when Todd Killen, Rick Holland, and I decided it was too important for our community not to have, and brought it back and brought it to the Bossier Tennis Center. Since bringing it to Bossier, the city tennis tournament is better than it ever has been. Every year the tournament has been bigger than the year before. This year, we had close to 300 players. It has been recognized and honored with numerous awards, including being selected as the best adult tournament of the year, not only in the entire state of Louisiana, but as the best adult tournament in the entire South, which encompasses nine states, Alabama, Arkansas, Georgia, Kentucky, Louisiana, Mississippi, North Carolina, South Carolina, and Tennessee. However, it's not only an adult tournament, it's a tournament for all ages, all abilities. This past year, we honored 23 different city champions in 23 different events, including father-son, father-daughter, mother-son, and mother-daughter. We also started a city hall of fame where each year we honor the people who have been instrumental in developing the rich tennis tradition we have in this community. Todd and I have been approached countless times by people in Shreveport, asking us when we're going to bring the city tennis tournament back to Shreveport. They've even asked, at the very least, if we do not have enough courts at Bossier Tennis Center, if we can move the overflow matches to Quirby's and Paramount Oaks Tennis Club. I have no interest in hosting this tournament with anyone else other than Todd and his team, and having these six extra courts will ensure that we can continue to play the entire tournament at the Bossier Tennis Center for years to come. Next May, we'll be commemorating the 100th year since the city tennis tournament first began. My hope is for some of you to come out and see this incredibly special atmosphere and event we've brought to Bossier. Thank you. I don't know if anyone has any questions for me, but I'm happy to answer if you do.
Thank you for your comments.
Good afternoon. My name is Jay Boyd. I reside at 140 Corona Lake Court in Bossier City. I'm a longtime resident of Bossier City. All of my children graduated from Airline High School. And my involvement with tennis began, many, you may remember, a group called Play Tennis Bossier. We lost our only tennis courts in Bossier, and we ended up, a small handful of us got together and started calling on city council, school board, police jury. We ended up with a facility that originally was 12 courts, since was added to in the clubhouse, got us to the size that we are now. So that goes back a number of years. Now we're talking about, and the growth caused us to go from the 12 to the 18 courts. So my involvement started there. I've since that been president of the CTA, which is Community Tennis Association in Northwest Louisiana. Recently, finished my term as president of Louisiana Tennis Association. I do a lot of stuff with USTA Southern, which is the nine states Jeffrey just talked about. I'm on the awards committee for USTA National. So obviously, I have a vested interest in tennis and am very involved in tennis. So the question is, why tennis? And for many of you here that may not really be involved in tennis, and I think it really boils down to something. When we were here a few weeks ago, talking about the RFP for Todd extending his contract, Councilman Montgomery brought up, and that is quality of life. I mean, that's really what we're talking about with adding these courts, et cetera, here. So what's really the six additional courts going to mean from a standpoint of quality of life? There have been a lot of questions that have come up relative to what's it going to do in terms of bringing more tournaments in, et cetera. One, six more soft courts will get us up to 18. That'll be the second most soft courts of any facility in the state of Louisiana. And a lot of tournaments that want to do completely on soft court, that's a big deal in terms of being able to attract them. So will give us that ability. But, you know, more importantly than that is the ability to provide programming for our juniors and our adults here in Bossier. More programming, more participants, means not just a better quality of life that I talked about, but actually a quantity of life. And you may have heard me talk about this before, but a number of years ago, I was in Atlanta. Dr. Brian Hayline, who is the chief medical officer for the NCAAs, was giving a speech, and he asked the audience, what activity is going to add more years to your life than anything else? And you probably know the answer now, or else I wouldn't be talking about it. It was tennis. Kind of blew me away. So when we're talking about these six additional courts and the additional programming, we're talking about being able to add quality as well as quantity of life to our citizens here. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good afternoon. My name is Bill Phillips. I reside at 100 Pigeon Loop, Lafayette, Louisiana. I am the executive director of the Louisiana Tennis Association. I very much enjoy coming here to Bossier. I've been working with Todd and with his predecessor for many years in developing programs for the citizens of Bossier. For me, it is a quality of life issue for the citizens here. We are one of the few sports out there that is a cradle-to-grave sport. When kids get into sports and organized athletics, the dropout rate at 13 is about 70%. And most of that is because there are not enough pathways for them to continue in the sport. In our sport, you can continue forever. In fact, we recently held the National 95s Tournament in California. One of the other factors is that the children who play tennis are more likely to make good grades, are more likely to go to college, and are more likely to have really solid socialization skills. So adding these additional courts is not only an opportunity for more economic impact on the city, for larger events and self-contained events, but it's more able to offer grassroots programming and to be more, bring more kids and more adults into the sport, which is a lifetime sport, and as Jay said, is a sport for longevity. So I fully support this, and obviously, I'm an advocate for tennis, but I'm an advocate for quality of life and health and wellness, and certainly Louisiana can use all of that that it can get. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The floor is still open for those who may be a guest. I think the four speakers has been four this item. So, Mr. Crockett?
How are y'all doing? David Crockett, 653 Dumane Drive, Bossier City. Yep. After the last meeting, I took an opportunity to go by every park that I could go by in Bossier City. And I, I think one of the great things about this coming up is that I think it should cause a discussion among all the community about what is the mayor's and the council's vision for all the parks in Bossier City. And I, no pun intended, but I would call this kind of like a serving the underserved comment about, about this issue. I think $1.5 million would be great to be used at that park. I drove by North Bossier Park, and it, to me, should be the standard for all parks in Bossier City, not just this. But you look at serving the underserved, I'd say, look at your baseball fields. How many infields do you have for practice for Little League or other church leagues and things like that? I didn't find one. When I talked to the people at what, to me, ought to be the premier park in all of Bossier City, I drove by Hooter Neighborhood Community Park. The exterior of that building needs a lot of work. The floors inside need a lot of work. And to me, that ought to be the premier park in all of Bossier City. That's where the, you have the family services that go to that park. But then when you look at North Bossier Park, you see rubberized playground areas where kid falls, you know, it'll last forever. But the other parks need to be rejuvenated. They need rubberized parks, you know, landing surfaces for the kids out there as well. So I would just like to see this as the beginning of a discussion of what is the mayor's and the council's vision for all parks in Bossier City. And so, but you look at it, and I talked to some of the kids out at, well, I'll talk to people everywhere I went, but especially at Hooter Neighborhood Park, they're so creative there. They, you know, people, football coaches go out there and draw lines on the field, but they're, because there's no place else to practice football for these teams. Again, I say baseball, I mean, that's one of the biggest sports in Bossier City. It brings families together, you know, and I think that no infield makes a limitation, that the first time that little kid goes out and hits that little tee ball, and he runs the wrong direction because he never practiced on an infield. So those are my comments. It's a great opportunity, and I hope that maybe the end result of this would be a long-range vision, to bring all parks to the same high standard that we have in North Bossier. But thank you.
Thank you. Think we have time for one more person to speak, if there's someone who would like to speak?
Mr. Darby, I wanted a gentleman, Tommy Harvey, wanted me to express his desire if these courts are funded and approved today. To your point, he's pledged $15,000 for wind screens at the new courts. I think Todd was aware of that. So to your point of, you know, them being able to find people and produce additional funds and money through fundraising, I think, again, shows and speaks to the credibility of the tennis community and how devoted they are to the courts.
That's wonderful. Anyone from the administration? I know we had a workshop already, and we discussed the pros and cons. Mr. Bohannon, if you want to speak, we'll give you time.
So as Ben mentioned, the tennis community here in our city and so forth has grown. They started small, now they've become large. Yes, we need additional courts. I told you all that from the beginning. Soft courts, six of them would be awesome. We would thoroughly enjoy having that to continue the growth in this area. The people, if you ever have an opportunity to make it to the Katie Build, need to come see the people, the tennis community all involved, working. I mean, they are into it, making it successful. As you can tell, it has grown. And the other tournaments that are held there, people want to come to Bossier to play. Todd and his crew maintains the courts that are desired amongst the tournament players that come up here to play, to come to Bossier and play. And I wish y'all'd give this serious consideration and approve what has been asked to continue the growth of the number one public facility in the state of Louisiana and across the South. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bohannon. Counsel, any other discussion?
I'd like to speak, sir. Like the man came up a while ago, and he's talking about how many different states bringing people in. That's bringing money to Bossier, and I like that idea. I think the money's already dedicated for athletics already, so we already have the money. So if we just use that for the tennis courts, I'm for it, because it brings people into town, and they spend money. I think that's a win-win myself.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all for your comments. We are prepared to cast our votes if there's no other discussion. Please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion fails.
Motion fails. Adopt an ordinance declaring approximately 60 expired bulletproof vests surplus to the needs of the Bossier City Fire Department and donating same to Simple Church for donation to War as Mexico Fire Department. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Freez, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? The floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries.
Counselor Chair will take a brief two-minute commission period to let the conference room clear. Okay. We may resume.
Adopt an ordinance allocating $265,000 for repairs and upgrades to the north side pump station using the sewer capital contingency fund to cover all project costs. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hammond, seconded by Mr. Williams and, I think, Smith. Okay, any discussion? And the floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to contract with Manchak Consulting Group to provide assistance in obtaining state and federal grant opportunities as it relates to the infrastructure needs of the city of Bossier City. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Williams, seconded by Mr. Montgomery. Discussion, counsel? Wanted to, to ask one thing on this item. If you could answer, Ben. In the, in the scope of the work, is it, is it correct to interpret that the grant writer will submit two applications for, you know, just in, in total?
We hope to submit more than two.
So you mean?
Yes. The intent is to, to go after any and all projects that we can and to have some resources there to attack those with, you know, seriousness. And, and that's our objective. So there's a, a bunch of money available through the federal government directly related to infrastructure projects. A lot of communities are all going to be fighting for that, that same pot of money, and, and this is, this is resources for, for us to pursue that with, with everything we got to put Bossier in the best position possible to get that, that funding. So I expect it to last longer than just two applications, so that's, that's our plan.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. And the floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. New business, introducing ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to enter into the attached amended local services agreement with the parish of Bossier and to execute any documents in furtherance thereof. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Smith and seconded by Mr. Maggio. Discussion. Comments? Please cast your vote.
Mr. Free? Motion carries. Introducing ordinance authorizing and approving the engagement of Heard McElroy Investral LLC to provide professional services to audit the financial statements of the fireman's pension and relief fund and policeman's pension and relief fund. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Montgomery, and seconded by Mr. Williams. Discussion, counsel? The floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to approve report of change order eight for the LTRI Louisiana Technology Research Institute Bossier. First reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion, Mr. Freez, seconded by Mr. Smith. And any comments? Discussion. And the floor is open for your input or comments, ordinance. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached cooperative endeavor agreement with Louisiana Department of Treasury and State of Louisiana. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Smith and seconded by Mr. Maggio. Discussion.
Mayor, what is this on? The cooperative agreement? Or Charles?
Well, it's unclaimed property, I believe.
Oh, is that what?
We received two line item appropriations in Act 170 of the 2022 regular legislative session, and so they require a CEA in order for us to get those funds. This is for one of those appropriations that we're ready to move forward with.
This is to fix Hamilton Road where they tore it up?
It's for improvements.
Fixing the bridge, the, I mean, the train trestle?
This is for improvements on replacing street panels.
Anyone would like to comment? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one firefighter due to vacancy from resignation. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion, Mr. Freez, seconded by Mr. Maggio and Mr. Hammond, I think. Any comments? Anyone would like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one police officer and two police jailers. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Freez, seconded by Mr. Maggio and also Mr. Williams. Any comments? And the floor is open for your comments. Please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing one vacant fire training officer position to be replaced with one fire prevention officer position. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Freez, seconded by Mr. Williams. Discussion. And the floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to approve the reading of the bids for P-22-09, the 2022 citywide street rehabilitation project, Phase One. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Hammond, seconded by Mr. Maggio. Discussion. The floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to contract with Rayleigh and Associates to provide design services for Phase One and Phase Two park additions at the Tinsley Ballpark. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Williams, seconded by Mr. Hammond. Discussion. Any comments? Please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to adopt the five-year capital projects plan. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion, Mr. Williams, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? And the floor is open for your comments. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution for Public Works to fill a part-time and full-time kennel worker in the animal control division. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Freez, and seconded by Mr. Hammond. Discussion. And comments? Please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to expedite the services to modernize and repair the freight elevator used for critical services at the Brookshire Grocery Arena. First and final readings.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Williams, seconded by Mr. Smith. On this item, maybe Mr. Montgomery might know, will the money of the fund, will it be that arena restoration fund to do this work?
Either that or the hotel motel tax. I don't know. What's the life of the elevator?
It'd be the life of the facility, the, the one that's there, it's been there.
Okay, so, yeah, we could certainly use.
It's the, the hotel motel tax is what we intend to use for that.
Either one of them.
And there's funding already in there, that's why it's a resolution. We just wanted to let y'all know what's going on there.
Okay.
Any other questions? We need to get on to that.
Um. Just regarding, Mr. Attorney, the part about the resolution, because we're going to appropriate funds, money?
I think the money's already been appropriated for this project.
Yeah, that's what he said. What I, what I'm curious about, when we do a resolution versus an ordinance, is that something you, you notice that we need to? In other words, we got in our code that you can do the resolution, but when it comes to appropriating money, it's normally, it's, it's an ordinance and not a resolution.
Typically, if the money's already been budgeted for a specific purpose, you can do it either way, but I'll, you know.
Correct. And, and Ms. Angela helped me with this one, but there's money already budgeted for that work. We're not appropriating additional dollars for that. If I'm misspeaking, help me.
Yes, we have a, a line item in the hotel motel budget for 2022 that has enough funds to cover it.
Okay, so it's a line item?
Yes, sir. It's called arena equipment.
Okay.
Is that the same place that the generator came out of?
No, the generator's.
No, sir, that was bond funds.
Okay.
But we, through the budget process, when you do have the line item, when we adopt the budget, we formally adopt it, Mr. Darby, to, to the appropriation of the money and the specifics of what it's being spent for. So we've done what we're supposed to do with the charter. Am I correct?
Yeah, it makes a difference, because it's a line item already been approved, but that's not, that's not clear here, so that's why I wanted to know.
And, and the main reason for the resolution is that we're entering into a contract with a service company to provide a service. And in order for us to do that, it's by, by charter, we've got to come to the council to get that approved. So it, the resolution allows us to get moving a little quicker as well. It's, it's, they've got events, and apparently, they're, they've got a workaround, but it's not a good situation over there, so.
Sure, sure. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Did we open the floor for comments?
Yes.
Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Reports. Angela Williamson, Finance Director, monthly finance report.
Good afternoon, counsel. Mayor Chandler. You have before you the financials for November 30th, 2022. Page one is revenue by fund. The city's currently 20, 28% over budget. General fund revenue is up due to an increase in the taxable assessment for 2022 property tax rule. There was no change to the mileage rates. Hotel motel fund revenue is up because one of the November 2021 hotel occupancy tax payments was received in December prior year. Streets and drainage fund revenue is down because the November 2021, there was a transfer from sales tax capital fund in the amount of $500,000 for unplanned streets and drainage projects. EMS revenue is up because an EMS ambulance alliance payment of $374,000 was received in November 2022. Also, EMS billings for November 2022 increased $152,000 compared to November 2021. Page two is the expenses by fund. The city's currently 7% under budget. EMS expenses increased compared to November 2021 due to transferring the EMS ambulance alliance payment for $374,000 received in November 2022 to the EMS capital. Page three is the sales tax comparative report. Sales tax revenue is up 11.8% compared to November 2021. Page four is the manning report. There are the same amount of employees as last month. Total employees as of month-end is 655, 49 below the budgeted positions of 704. Page five is the water and sewer utility report. Net operating income after debt service for November 2022 has increased 85% compared to November 2021. Current year-to-date income has increased 94% over prior year and is 5% over budget. On a rolling 12-month basis, current net operating income is up 84%. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Engineering Department, monthly project report.
Good report.
30 seconds. Oh, there you go.
I'm getting back there.
Do a monthly update for engineering while she gets back there for December, wrap up the year. Got 101 ongoing in design and construction, 93 actually under construction. Carriageway Phase Two, should be getting some updated aerial pictures of this, but they are continuing, even with the weather, to hold their schedule, staying on time. LTRI, spoke with the architect and the contractor, they're still shooting for that February date of wrapping that up. We're putting a lot of pressure on the contractor to get that one done. 71 lighting, waiting on materials to come in. They've got all the conduit and all the footings done, doing a little bit of dress-up cleanup. But as soon as we get materials in, you'll start seeing light poles go up on that one. Bossier Arts Council, they're a little behind on that, but that's due to a little bit of the weather, and they'll have some days they'll end up washing out. Some private development going, still fighting the weather a little bit out at the Velagio. Also got Redwood Canal Placing Unit Three kicking up. Believe Unit Four is getting ready to start as well. Some projects are in designer out to bid. Tinsley Phase Two, we just, y'all just approved, did contract them with that designer, so we'll get that underway to get those parking lots expanded. One thing I do want to talk about, just very, very briefly, is what Wade's doing in conjunction with engineering out for our ditch cleaning with the appropriation of some GPS equipment. We've been able to get out there and clean ditches and give Wade and his guys some grades, but they're actually out there, you can kind of see here on the left, this is about what it looks before he's actually getting cleaning, and this is the same ditch once he's done. Really, really helping with the, some of the drainage issues going around, and so really helping to make water get out. Any questions? Any questions? Thank y'all.
Thank you. Merry Christmas. I have one announcement, counsel. The next council meeting will be January the 10th, 2023, so we won't have a council meeting next week or the week after. And I'm sure every council member would like to wish their constituent a Merry Christmas. Anyone would like to wish Merry Christmas?
Yeah, I'd like to wish all the council, but also Phil's for, again, taking care of us and, and doing a great job as a one-man band, a one-woman band, okay? Anyway, hope your families have a, have a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Okay. And Mr. Mayor?
I guess I gotta say, I, I want to say Merry Christmas too, and Merry Christmas to all the citizens of Bossier, and Merry Christmas to all the work, everybody that we work with every day in the city. They do a lot, and they've worked hard this year, and I want to appreciate all of them.
Merry Christmas. This means stands in charge.